All right. Good morning. Welcome to the September eleventh to two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of Fayette County Commission. We are gonna, since it is nine eleven and the twenty-third anniversary of the attacks on the towers, we're gonna take a moment of silence and then we'll start the pledge. Delegate Brooks, could you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
And I will signal you in. So let's just take a moment. Stand for the pledge.
Please join the committee. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let's get to the exonerations ordered to combine or divide. Ace has a big exoneration coming. That's a double digit. Yes, so I move to approve the exonerations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I move that we approve the single refund.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the combined divide or surrogate of land. It looks like there are three different ones.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, Tom, I should have asked upfront, can we stamp for you on the things that allow stamps?
Yeah, I was gonna mention that.
And also, do you authorize John and I to sign the things? We have something apparently a grant that needs to be signed today. So do you authorize John and I to sign on your behalf?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So these, I think, can be stamped, right?
Yep, and this one too.
Moving on, I move that we approve payroll for nine twenty.
Second.
All favor. Vouchers and invoices. We had, John, go ahead and tell me, and Tom, if you would, your any concerns you want to raise about the vouchers and invoices, and then I'll chime in.
Okay, the the issue that we have is that we're being asked to pay bills for the fire training center. And those were not on the fire levy when it was produced. It was only for the fire departments themselves. I even talked with you about it. So at this time, until we get some clarifications, I'm gonna hold those. The others I don't have an issue with.
I think another, Tom, go ahead. Do you have?
No, I no, I didn't say anything. I'm just listening right now.
Okay, I just wanted to see if you had anything to add. With regard to this, there's a reimbursement. Even if we were doing reimbursements for the fire training center, and I know that in, I believe it was May that we gave notice that we would not be doing that. The Hutch's Record Service reimbursement is something that should have come through the commission in advance. That's a, that's an extraordinary amount of money. Ruth is our spending authority and her limit is fifteen thousand dollars, so it has to come through us. Like, we, we can't spend anything on behalf of the county without the votes. So I just wanna make sure that you guys are reminded of that. And I think the last time really this came up was was before you were on board, Josh. It was back when Joe Chris was still living and still in the fire coordinator position. So those things, and I think in the letter that we sent you guys, we wanna compete those. We need to make sure that the contracts competed right. And then the county commission needs to approve it. And that way you don't have to worry about not getting reimbursed for something that comes through. And we are still trying to vet how and under what circumstances we can fund the fire training center. I talked with Chris Burford about helping you guys apply for some grant funding for some of the things you wanna do because I, I, I know I personally would wholeheartedly, you know, support grants and do the grant letters and help facilitate that sort of thing. I think we might even be able to come up with some grant matches out of the county budget, depending on what the plan is and what's going on. But we have, we have some concerns about the levy itself and whether it can be used for, for that purpose. So we're still vetting that. We have lawyers looking at it, but it's just right now, that's just where it is. And so that's what that's about. And I think just, just to make sure everybody's clear, I, I think that I wanna suggest to my colleagues that we send a letter to the fire departments and to the fire association about our purchase policy, just reminding because it's been a long time since we brought that up and there are a lot of new players. And just make sure everybody understands that, so it doesn't seem like they're being frustrated when they try to do things, you know, just to know what's going on and where we are with these things. So anyway, so do you wanna move to approve the budget then?
Yeah. I'll move to approve the vouchers and invoices minus the fire trading center.
My second. All favor. Okay.
And Ms. Taylor, if I can say one thing.
Yes.
You've mentioned this before, but we have said this several times to them about, about the limits and stuff like that before. Yeah, I don't know when this was done, but, uh, cause I haven't seen it, but I mean, I think we have mentioned this several times. We put it in a letter prior to. So there's gonna be a question, when is it going to, when are they not gonna stop doing it when we stop authorizing them? But anyway, I just have to put my two cents worth in on that.
Okay, it's okay. You can just let us know. I mean, it, the, the point is, is that we have, you know, we have mentioned it, and I was, I was like more worried for you guys when I saw that in here than I was upset or anything, you know? I was just like, oh, you know, did the message not get through? Because we're still trying to figure this out. So
How's?
I know, I was.
I, I think, I wanna go ahead and go for, what is the cost on that?
That's all. It's, it's like twenty-eight thousand. So the same thing was spent last year within a couple.
It's, yeah, it would be mine, so. I'm gonna, I mean. I, so it's a collective thing. So just my thoughts, the fire department's understand your reimbursements, but what is the county's order for the fire departments? Would that be different? I think, why don't we go ahead and vote on it today and then get clarification from our council about, just to make sure it can.
What account it comes out of.
Yeah, what account it comes out of, because that is an important program.
Okay, yeah, it is. Helps educate.
We're talking, we're talking about the fire prevention materials that were included that they need to, because this is the school season for that. But I'm just, I wanna get some clarification from Michael Taylor, and maybe I can get him on here for executive session here in a little bit. I didn't have time to text him before the meeting, but to, because I remember he said, you know, told us several times that reimbursements was all we could do, and we don't know if that applies to only the fire departments or if that applies to the county commission purchasing on behalf of the fire.
It's not an invoice.
Well, like.
No, that one. You can order it and then.
So is there money in the budget for the, but see, it's still the fire association and not a fire department, and that's where we're you know, that's, that's where the hiccup is with what we can do and what we can't do. So I'm gonna move that we approve the fire prevention material expenditure pending legal advice on which fund we can.
Second.
I mean, the fire department's handed out, the association don't have, like, they feel good to the school.
I understand. These are bureaucratic technicalities that frustrate our ability to run the government.
True.
I mean, that is just, it's just the way it is. So, I mean, we understand how it works, and we understand that, you know, the fire coordinator would buy it for all the fire departments and fire departments handed out. And we may have to do something creative by allocating, you know, doing something like we're reimbursing this fire department for this, but.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, yeah. So we just, we just need to figure it out. We want you to have the materials, so we just wanna get it through today and, and get those ordered, then we'll figure out which fund comes from and how we need to do it to, to make sure it's above board. Okay, so meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from eight twenty-one.
Second, all in favor. State settlements.
I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlements.
Second, all in favor. Okay, now we have a couple of subcategories here. We have the recommendation by fiduciary commissioner. Um, we don't have a lawyer here today. Anthony reviewed it all besides me. Yeah, I remember that he did. He sent us that email about it. Prosecutors and grand jury today, so kind of flying solo. I need, let me sign the documents so I can distinguish which one. Michelle, can you, will you come up and present those two? Since those are from your office. And he already looked over them, and I looked over them too, and.
She needs to stand up for comments.
Okay.
Yeah. So the first, the first one was the Stichler estate. And I believe they wanted to remove the administratrix because she wasn't doing what she was supposed to do. I recall correctly.
Yeah, that's the one. We already actually had reviewed that in here, and there was a notice issue that we were concerned about.
Gotcha. So it went to the fiduciary commissioner to Paul Clay. Paul Clay gave you the recommendation. You guys can accept it or not.
Right, and his recommendation was that she be removed.
Correct.
And I can't remember if he recommended who should be appointed.
I think he did it. I believe, well, I believe they mentioned who would be the best choice out of the remaining heirs. I don't know if he said that right, that person should be appointed.
Okay, so there were a number of, of issues with this administratrix dropping the ball.
Yeah.
Basically, and because of that, the fiduciary commissioner, Paul Clay in this case, had recommended that she be removed as administratrix, which is the same thing as an executrix. Except she was appointed and not in the will. And to file an accounting of all the assets that had been disposed of during the period. So she had actually had control over some assets and, and didn't distribute the money and that, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Including proceeds of a bank account that was in the decedent's sole name, and it says she should also be ordered to cooperate with the new administrator and the transfer of the assets. And that they all cooperate. He, I don't see the name of anybody that he recommends be appointed, so I guess they're gonna have to fight that out in your office.
Yeah, they, someone will have to, also have come in to be.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna move that we approve the order. And specifically with emphasis on those recommendations from the fiduciary commissioner, that the current administratrix be removed and that she file that accounting of assets and that she cooperate with the successor administrator in administering the estate.
Second.
All in favor. All right, so.
The other one is you all have to approve its receipts distributions and dispersments. There's two different ways to close out an estate. One, you get all of the beneficiaries or heirs to sign a waiver. The other way is to publish the, all of the receipts that distributions and dispersments, and then you guys sign off on that.
And this is, I see the publication, so it looks like it was public.
Yeah, the, the only reason why they went this route with this particular estate is because there were a lot of beneficiaries, including three in England. And so rather than trying to get signatures from those people, this particular executor and Phil Tissue decided to just do it this way.
Well, so these people's credit, they're very generous. They're giving to two humane societies and a lot of other charities.
Yes, yes. It was a rather large state.
Well, I, I move that we approve the final order in the estate of Nora Reed.
Second.
All favor. We all have to sign us.
It's not fifteen? I know. I can just stay up here. You guys get to see, see me for all that stuff today.
Yeah. All right, moving on. Michelle, you've got a list of election officials for us.
Do, that should be in your packet.
So I reviewed the list. I'm on the executive committee, and we did our best to get people to participate. I wanna suggest, based on some of the calls that I made and that I made during the primary, that you guys might wanna, and I know you're so busy, but might wanna do a survey for your poll workers so they can tell you their grievances. And then it might help us recruit them again, because some of them, you know, one goofy thing will have happened, and it's not always goofy, but a couple of times it, it was, but happened, and they didn't perceive what the whole skip the prime, I know, because I've discussed them with you, but but to give them a chance to say, you know, what was good, what was bad, and, you know, what we can change and that sort of thing. I mean, I'm not saying, you know, obviously that's your choice, but I, I maybe give them a voice to, to say, like, what can we do better? We know some things are gonna plague us every election, but some things, you know.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. It's something we discussed, and I, I would hope any of our poll workers would come to us with issues, but I know some things that just.
They wait, and, and some of them, and, and I don't believe that you are a political operator, you know, but like some of the Republicans are like, well, county clerks, and I, and I will assure them the county clerk is the county clerk first. So, but I would just like to give them a chance, even if it's anonymous, or if they wanna put their name and follow up or whatever, and just let them kind of tell you what's working and what isn't, because, because I, that was a couple of people who've said no to me over the last two were it was because of something that I think could have been fixed easily and.
Yeah.
You know.
And I agree, that stuff does happen.
Yeah.
But yes, and, and we had talked about that, and just, like you said, we're busy. So, but I agree. I think it's good to give them an opportunity to let us know what's good and bad. I mean, they might, you know, and they might have good suggestions on how to change things or.
And we already voted on the official list. I kinda lost track of what I was doing.
Aye.
No, okay, so I move that we approve the election official list submitted by both parties.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Tom?
No, I said aye.
Okay, sorry, we didn't hear you.
It's okay. I think we've done it all at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then the early voting locations, you wanna go ahead and just say for the record what that was?
Sure, you could, we have to agree, the county commission and the county clerk have to agree each time to continue using the same locations. So I'm agreeing to use the same three locations, which are the memorial building. I mean, it's Green Valley Church. They have requested that we make that November fixture change from United Methodist to this church and the Montgomery Community Center.
Okay, so I move that we approve those early voting locations.
Second.
All favor.
I have one more exhibit item that we might as well go ahead and let you guys do, which is our Haba grant. We were awarded the entire amount that we asked for, and what we're gonna use that money for is to replace all the backup batteries in the express pipes and the DST hundreds. So that is a, and, and a maintenance expense that needs to happen. It's almost thirty thousand dollars to do that for all of our machines. So you guys only have to pay half of it now.
Well, I move that we approve the, or accept the grant.
Second.
All in favor.
There's just one saving grace.
He and I both have to sign it since.
I think they will take more savings.
All right, so did, were you guys able to reach WVU Law Clinic about?
They sent an email. They both had me, the two people that would be over had meetings, but I could gather any, either I can answer the questions or get, send the questions to them or anything they have.
Well, it's more of a matter of so I realized that they, we were going off where they're old. This is with regard for the public's information. John's request that we go ahead and I, and when I think we all agree with, to update the Unified Development Code. And WVU Law Clinic, they have a land use clinic that's really, really good at doing these kind of things. And they submitted a proposal some time ago that they're still willing to honor to do that for us, but I've read the proposal in depth again, and some of my concerns, one is they need to change the deliverable dates, because they still have the old dates, you know, the proposal we had was old date.
Right.
So we need to do that. I'm just pulling up my list and wanting, that's where I made my best here. I also want there to be, I want them to incorporate something into that about meeting regularly with not only the planning commission, but the Fayette County Commission, because I want updates on it. I don't, you know, we have some lessons learned from the comp plan. But I also want to, I want them to meet with us before they do any work, so they understand what our expectations are, because the, while the planning commission is the planning commission, Fayette County Commission is paying for this, for the update, and it's our code. So they need to talk to us in that way, and hopefully we can encourage the planning commissioner, maybe incorporate our recommendations or our stuff into a letter to the planning commission, so the planning commission understands what our vision is. And, you know, what, what we're trying to do. Of course, they act independently, but at, at the same time, you know, I think it's helpful to communicate with them what, what we have in mind. The other thing, so I want the dates updated. I want meetings with Fayette County Commission, you know, and they can attend a meeting over Zoom with us. And and I just, in looking at it and some of the stuff, I think there are some things in the proposal that don't need to be done. And, and those are, I'm gonna wanna discuss those with them so they can explain to me more fully, so I can be informed if I, you know. They may say, oh, no, this means something other than I think it means. So so I'd like to get them on an agenda
Okay.
real soon, so we can, so we can ask them questions and give them some guidance.
Sure.
So do my colleagues have anything to add?
No, I, no, I don't. I agree with everything you said.
Okay, thank you. All right, but because we don't wanna hold this work up, the estimate for the work, was it forty thousand dollars?
I don't, I thought it was.
Thirty.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
It's gonna be like a two-phase, though. The first phase, I don't have it, is ten thousand.
Yeah.
The first phase is like an audit to go through our UDC.
Yeah.
So the first phase is ten thousand, and then the rest of it is not to exceed.
Okay, so I, I think we ought to go ahead and, and push through the funding for it. I mean, I think we all wanna do it. It's just a matter of, I would like them to incorporate those things into it, and, and I think we might wanna remove some things from the deliverables.
Yeah, and I think that's just their standard, so I'm sure you can.
Clearly, they're saying.
Yeah.
And I want something more tailored to Fayette County.
Yeah, and that's fine. Jesse would have loved to have been here. I just emailed him, but he had a nine o'clock meeting, so I'm sure I'll get and see what meeting he can come to.
So I move that we approve the having WVU Law Clinic review and update our UDC to not, for a price not to exceed forty thousand dollars with the changes I've already outlined.
Second.
All in favor. Hey, Ruth.
You're about the first one. So Travis said you don't need to come down there.
Yeah, I, I didn't think you needed to come down. So we have a critical manning shortage in the certain clerk's office. And sometimes when we have that, we go ahead and if nobody objects to the approval, to the hire, we go ahead and let the critically manned office hire, and then we approve it retrospectively, not pro top. So I move that we approve, what's her name? Do we have her name?
Kathy.
Oh, she, I know, Wees, that's right. She's.
Kelly, not Kathy.
Yeah, it's Kelly. Kelly Wees, who is coincidentally Jessica Shock in prosecutors offices and others. Very good person. I move that we approve her hire, not pro top.
Second.
All in favor. So the solid waste authority. We had already discussed this, and I thought we had approved it. Appointing Bill Howard to, back to the solid waste authority, he's doing a great job. But apparently we didn't finish the motion and didn't sign everything we need to sign, probably a chaotic meeting that day. So I move that we officially appoint Bill Howard to the solid waste authority.
Second.
All in favor. Okay.
So this is an ABC acknowledgement letter for dark and dusty mobile bar service to provide alcohol at an event at Evermore Ridge weddings and events.
Okay.
Good.
I, I have a question. Is this a, would it be like a, a trailer with drinks? What is this?
It's a mobile bar service, so I would assume so, yeah. And I guess everywhere they go, you would have to approve it.
Yeah.
Because it's a new location.
Well, it happens every time anyway. I mean, because we're approving, or, well, I don't even think we're approving. We're just acknowledging that we know they're, they're gonna do it, but but I, you know, a- anytime like they would move, but anytime a, a static organization serves alcohol, they have to come through us. It doesn't for that event, you know, if they don't normally.
This one, I think you'll just see more.
Yeah. We probably will. So let's, let's hit that one first. I move that we acknowledge that dark and dusty mobile bar service is going to serve alcohol at a wedding.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, now there's a secondary issue on there.
Yeah, so we had talked about either authorizing me to sign those acknowledgements or something, so they don't, because sometimes it's a fairly fast turnaround, because people don't know that they gotta do it.
Right, so I don't want, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I'm comfortable with you bringing anything to our attention you have concerns about. What are your thoughts?
I, I'm fine with that, but and I'm still stuck on somebody coming up with a trailer with a bar on it.
And, well, would they have beer trucks?
Yeah, I know, it, it just, everybody.
Tom?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with it.
Okay, so I'm gonna move that we approve authorizing county administrator to sign the acknowledgement letters to expedite that process.
Second.
All in favor.
And then we had a discussion about a support letter as a standing item. I don't know what you think about it, but this way we'll like, put it as a standing item and then list them or whatever.
I have concerns about that one, because I think we need to give the public notice about what support letter is before us. I think this is one we probably should postpone and just let Anthony weigh in.
Okay.
For all of us. Those are my, but that's my concern. Like, I feel like, like if there's a shady organization out there trying to get a support letter from us, the public should have the opportunity to tell us it's a shady organization, or, you know, whatever, or if the public opposes whatever that is, they should have the opportunity to say they oppose it.
Yeah, us, yeah, I agree, hundred percent.
So well, I mean, if, so do you guys wanna get legal advice on it, or, or you wanna vote on it now?
I, I just think we should have them come in and ask for the support letter in person. And then take care of it.
Tom?
I don't have a problem.
Okay, so we just don't need to vote on this thing, because that's our current policy.
Yeah.
Okay. So probably have time for one or two more.
This is our electrical service or electrical inspections. Angela, what did you say the change was?
So, um, we charge customers eighty-five dollars for an electrical inspection, if they solely, but for he's done it for us for eighteen years, and he's only charged us sixty-five dollars plus mileage. He's requesting seventy dollars plus mileage, which will still be, you know, under the eighty-five that we charge. So he's asking for a five dollar increase.
Well, I, I move that we approve that anyways.
Second.
All in favor.
Why can't it be like retail?
You have Transit Authority Board discussion.
So that one is in the past, both Commissioner Luisos and I have been appointed to the Transit Authority Board. Commissioner Brenman is the most he's got some interest in, let me speak that, but he, he's got some interest in being on it, and it's starting a brand new project that's gonna definitely go past the end of Commissioner Luisos's term. So So, um, I had asked Commissioner Luisos if he was. Willing to surrender his seat on that board to Commissioner Brenman. And the answer was absolutely. So, um, I'm moving that we appoint Commissioner Brenman to the Transit Authority Board. Um, to replace Commissioner Luisos for those reasons.
Second.
All in favor? All right. And let's go ahead and go to nine third. So, John, you want to speak to the Armstrong, do you want to have Leslie on?
Leslie may be on.
Okay, go ahead and unmute Leslie and. Leslie, could you talk to us about this Armstrong P S D request for grant match and support letter?
Sure, good morning. Armstrong P S D wants to do a, a sanitary sewer survey. And the cost of that survey per their engineering firm is roughly eighty thousand dollars. So we would be able to apply for fifty percent of that through the. Uh, pre-funding assistance with the West Virginia Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council or I J D C. Um, they will only fund fifty percent of that per state code. So Armstrong is, in order to apply for this funding, they have to have a commitment for the other half of the funding.
Which is?
Forty thousand dollars.
And what are the implications given all the, the activity with the P S C?
Well, that is actually a question that I'm not able to answer. I, I don't know what uh. Imp- implications that's going to have on the, on an S S E S. I don't. In previous projects, West Virginia American Water, if they were the, the entity that overtook of, of. A utility, they had to repay these funds. But I don't know if that'll be the same, if there is. A different entity that takes them over such as another P S D.
Did they ever repay the? So we haven't been, they did. But there are others they haven't repaid.
Yeah, was it Armstrong asked for us to forgive uh?
Yeah, Lawrence Washington was still there. He came in and asked.
Who's the lawyer for the, do you know who the lawyer is for Armstrong?
No, they changed attorneys. Leslie, do you know who the new attorney is?
I do not know who the new attorney is. I haven't had any interaction with their new attorney.
What, ca- do you guys care if we, is this, how time sensitive is this, Leslie?
Well, the applications for pre-funding assistance are accepted on a rolling basis. Um, they are accepted by the tenth day of the month and. And of course that's passed, so um, we have until October tenth to submit the next application. So if you all would like to table it and allow us a little bit of time to get the answers to what kind of imp- implications the. Uh, pending litigation through the P S D goes and also find out. The name of their attorney and try to have some interaction. We're glad to do that.
Oh, well, we have a meeting on October second, so. Um, I'd like their attorney to be present for that meeting if possible, and if not, we might need to schedule something, but. Um, I would, I would like to do that. So I, I, we, go ahead, Tom, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, I, no, I'm probably lagging, but yeah, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. I know that I. Read something, and you read so much as a commissioner, sometimes you go back on memory. And John, you can probably correct me or, or uh, Leslie can correct me. Did, did the P S D hold off on a decision to, from what I read? In order to let this happen? In order to let this uh. Try to get this match happened, did, did, did I read correctly?
What they've done, Tom, is they put off their hearing until October.
Was it, was it on purpose for this though, what I read?
It was after request of the new attorney for the P S D.
Okay, I didn't know whether I read, that, remember that, reading that correctly or not, so. Basically, is that what they done is, is, is help the decision off from attorney requesting that in, in order to get funding?
No, I don't think that was the case. Um, I think that the, they, the P S D. Obtained a new attorney or changed attorneys. And that attorney needed some additional time to review the case. Prior to the P S C hearing, is what I, I believe happened.
Okay, all right, well, okay. I just, I had to ask that question. I knew John, you would know the answer to it. So, yeah, I, I agree with postponement to the second.
And Kay Casto, Kay and Casto. Switched over and now works with West Virginia American Water. That's why Armstrong Creek didn't want them representing them.
All right, well, I.
There was some kind of.
Go ahead, Tom, sorry.
No, that's okay, it was, it, it's mute.
Okay, I move that we uh, postpone this item to uh, October second meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
And you want their attorney present?
Yes. Yes, want them present. And Leslie, whatever you can find out during that time, we would really appreciate. Um, Ruth, back to you. See, I can just read these off, want me to, C F I A grant application?
So Amy just needs you to approve. Submitting an application is due at the end of the month. So. They have various things they'll concentrate on. One of them is hazards in your courthouse. This is the courthouse. Facilities improvement. So we're trying to get somebody to give us a quote on these broken tiles that people have tripped over. And if, if that's the case, that's what we're looking for. But she needs you guys to approve it and approve Tom's assignment because it's due. I want to say the twenty-fourth, or the twenty-eighth, somewhere around in there. I move that we approve it.
Second.
All in favor? Hey, Ruth Grant, Angela?
Um, so you know, last year we had the two hundred thousand dollar grant. We spent all of that money, so the next grant cycle. Um, the applications are due on the twentieth of this month. Um, so I got with Amy and she's gonna help write it, but. The question I had is, they ask you how much? So I know there had been previous conversations with municipalities to include them in our grant. So my question to you is, how much? Because um, I know Anstead has a school, they're interested in. Having part of that grant. There were some places in Montgomery and Golly Bridge.
The question is, how much do we want to? Survey the municipalities to see what they're.
Um, cost wise, no. I mean, we have the database of the map, um, but as far as quotes, we don't.
When does it do?
The twentieth. So, I mean, I can use any figure, but my question is, did we want to include the municipalities in our grant application? Yeah.
Which grant is that again?
Ree- it's the Reef Grant.
Okay, well, I thought it was, uh, no, I thought it was November twentieth. Is it October twentieth?
It, well, that's what um, Reeve just um, sent the application information and it, um, now is October twentieth, so.
Huh, they changed it?
Yep.
I thought we was, anybody that requested. The uh. To have, to use the Reef Grant with the county, I thought we were supposed to be getting bids to last a year. Anytime somebody submitted that. Have we not done that?
We do on the houses, but not on the municipal commercial properties. We've not gotten quotes for those.
How much is the houses right now?
Um, if, right now, we're looking at an average about ninety-five hundred, and if we did all the houses that are in the. In just the county, that's nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, I know Montgomery, just that one building down there, the old City Hall, uh, high school.
Well, we, we mentioned the mayor's to submit, to get people to submit, and even I think Mr. Ingram. Uh, to submit for the Reef Grant through the county. And I, I think we mentioned that a couple of times. Has he, has he done that or not?
I've not gotten any figures. You guys may.
He, he submitted that one with his ARPA request, so we just need to get that from G I. For that one building.
It was forty-five thousand, around that amount.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought there was one that was like six hundred thousand.
Yeah, there was.
There was more than one on there, but the big one was the one.
Anstead has a school they want to tear down. Flying by the seat of my pants.
I mean, we, we.
Ran for that. If you look at the school in Oak Hill, if they get the property changed and everything, that's gonna be a million plus to tear that down.
So do we go, I mean, I don't have to get, like, basically when you submit the grant, you give them an idea of how many, you have to give them the addresses. It's not set in stone, but do you want me to go for a million and a half? Do you want me to go for five? I don't mean that.
I'm gonna tell you, my problem with that is, we can submit it every year. Is that correct, Angela?
Basically, they have to wait for the federal government to give them the money. So as long as the federal government continues to give them money. Then it'll be a grant opportunity. It's not guaranteed that we get it because it, more communities are learning about it.
I think we looked in, it was twenty-five million, was it twenty-five or thirty-five million available at?
Yeah, they, they haven't quite got that from the federal government, but that's what they're expecting is several, several.
Well, what was left, what was left over? Do you remember what was left over? Because there was some leftover.
Um, they didn't give me that figure. I'm not sure, um, on what was left over. I know they gave, they already had a second round. So this would actually be a third round, and it wouldn't be until March that we would, it would be available, if we received the grant.
Well, see, the only thing, I, 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 um, concerns me, we've asked. Everybody to put them in as quick as possible because we knew that to, to submit this was going to come soon, because. If we don't spend that money, and this is the issue, the reason I wanted to do it a year in advance. And have everything ready, so we can resubmit next October or November. Is if you got fifty thousand dollars left over, you cannot submit. Even if you got more available, if you've not, if you've not used that money. That's the only issue I have with that. I'm not gonna be here, but I mean, I'm just saying, it will hold it off another year to a year and a half. Uh, to be able to submit again.
Right. I don't think we're gonna have problem finding places to tear down. My question was mainly. In our grant application, are we gonna include, like I said, I'm, I don't know if um, town of Anstead has a quote on what it would cost to remove their high school. I think Montgomery, like you said, it was hun- several hundred thousand. So even those two, that's gonna put us at like one point eight if we include the hundred houses in the county.
Well, I, I think Montgomery put in. May have put in for earmark funding for that project also. I think, well, my suggestion is that we take a look at what has been submitted, given what Tom just said. You know, that we asked for it, and so whoever didn't submit can wait till next cycle.
Okay.
And, and then, but I, I don't want to get, and I understand his concern, I'm sure John shares it, that we don't want to get in a situation where we can't spend down what we request. Like we, like we had before. And I think we have processes in place, we won't do that.
We do, yeah, we do have.
But, um. And we want to make sure that we, you know, are gonna have the resources and be able to identify the people to tear these things down, because those are not small. Projects.
Correct, yeah.
Commercial projects. So I'd say consider the ones that you are aware of. And, um. And then a reasonable number based on your experience of commer- of residential properties.
Okay.
Based on what we've done. I mean, do you have a recommendation with regard to that?
So in the county, my recommendation was a hundred houses, which would be about nine hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so, and I can get with, um. Having and see if we can come up with a quote for the high school, because he did fill out the paperwork for that, and we've already done some asbestos. And environmental stuff with that Anstead building.
Know what you got, I mean, what? If we only get a limited amount of money, if they say, okay, we're not giving our entire bank to Fayette County. Um, do we want to incorporate those two commercials or, or even the one that's not in the, um. Earmark request range, because that one's just huge amount of money. Um, and I don't know what Anstead is, but maybe one commercial building and then do the rest. You know, alter our number of residuals to.
Right.
I mean, what do you guys think?
I, I think that we have a lot of residential's that need to go. The municipalities have several buildings that need to be taken care of. Uh, Oak Hill has been very aggressive when they're taking care of the, the homes themselves. Um, so is Smithers and so is Montgomery. These businesses, these old buildings, I mean, it, it, they are an eyesore. Should it fall on? How, how should we, that's a great question. I can't give you an answer. I will tell you that, that uh, if I were to vote right now, I would vote more on the residential. Um, have the municipalities apply, and then if we have extra funding available, maybe we can help.
Um, what do you think?
I mean, I. I don't know what to say. Yeah, I, yeah, I, I was hoping they would go ahead and submit something, so we'd have a, a roundabout figure, so I mean. So, you, Angela, you saying you got enough houses, you, you've had enough houses submitted. That uh. For, for, you say you, not, did you say ninety or a hundred houses?
I have about a hundred houses that we've identified and or citizens have filled out the consent form that we created. So you're averaging about ninety-five hundred per house. So that's nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was, is within the count.
Well, I, I, I tell you. You know, I'm not gonna be here, but I, I would, if, if the commission is going to continue to be aggressive. The way we started this in the first of the year. I would say a million and a half if the commission's gonna be aggressive. I think you can get them, I think you can get, there's, there's, I've estimated seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred. To a thousand houses out there and, and commercial properties that need to be uh, cleaned up. Uh, getting everybody, uh, getting the word out, letting everybody know that, that there's funding available. Uh, i- is the big thing. And, and I'd say a million and a half would probably do it, as, as long as the commission is aggressive. And, and trying to get people to submit the applications to use the money. Like I said before. When I come up with this, I was wanting to make it to where we don't have any problems in submitting for the next round. And we leaving it out there another year and try to get these things cleaned up for the next three to five years, but. That, that's my two cents, won't it? If, if the commission's gonna be aggressive, we've already got a hundred houses. I think you could get fifty more very easily, if you're aggressive on it. So I mean, I'd say a million and a half.
Well, what about the, the, I mean, so. I have a couple of things, like on, we know on the residential's that, that takes, that there's a legal process, so. Are we able to get all of that done for a hundred houses in the time we have to allocate the money?
So that is going to end, I'm sorry, Tom.
No, it, it should be, if, if we've got the, if we have, now I hate to answer this for you, Angela, I hope. That, that what we've talked about is what you was getting ready to say. If, if we've already got quotes on this, and I think we should have been in the process of getting a year quote. And they were supposed to start on it immediately, the way this was supposed to be done, immediately when it was, the grant is, is approved. Because we already have a bid on it, that was supposed to last for a year. It'll be done within three to six months easily. Now, is that, I hope that's what you was gonna say.
Um, the, the quotes are, I mean, even the houses that we don't have quotes on, that's just a, a long process. Um, the two hundred thousand, as you remember, they were voluntary teardowns. So that process is definitely something, I'm sure, I don't want to speak on Anthony's behalf, but that one speeds it up. If you guys do not want to go the voluntary route and you want to make it to where they have to pay back, that is gonna take longer.
So it's grant money, I don't think they need to pay back.
And that's fine, I just want to bring that up. If it's voluntary, we're not gonna track them down because they're gonna come to us. So it's just a matter of Anthony's office. That is.
So that's not, that's not, okay, so that, because that was a concern I had. But what are your thoughts? I guess that's my last thing is, of what we apply, are we prioritizing the residential teardowns? Or are we gonna try to fold in a, a select commercial or two? In our, in our objectives.
To me, it was anybody that would, uh, fill an application, apply for a REIT grant. Ain't that, ain't that what we discussed?
Okay, well, in this case, we do have two municipalities who've requested assistance. Tearing down buildings. I, I think the Montgomery one's extraordinary cost. Yeah, I don't want it to. I don't want it to monopolize all of our money, but do you have any, um, Mayor Primors here, Tom? Do, do you have any idea what?
I have not gotten any quotes.
I can, I can try to contact our main contractor that's done a lot of them and see if I can send some pictures and see if he can give me just a rough estimate. Because we're gonna know about the asbestos, we've already taken, you know, that, so I can do that by the twentieth. I just didn't know what you guys said.
What strikes me is that Montgomery's a six hundred and some thousand and it would already burned down. You know, I mean, it's cleaning up rubble and, and whatever toxic things are in that rubble, but. But it, you know, it's partially knocked down and burned down and. You know, and I'm wondering if like a, a, a standing structure, like what you have, is gonna exceed that amount.
And the city of Montgomery, they have got a grant already. They've applied for the same grant we are, so I don't know why they haven't applied.
See, that's what, you know, you look at the city of Bluefield, they've taken down several structures by through the grants. Um, municipalities can, you know, can apply just as well as the counties can. That's why I feel that we should look at the personal properties.
I think the smaller municipalities, the staff and just doesn't.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, the smaller municipalities don't have. Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what I was going to say, that smaller municipalities doesn't have the manpower to do what the county does and what some other municipalities, Oak Hill and Fayetteville has the funding and the manpower to do it. Most of the other smaller ones doesn't, is.
So let, let me ask this as a former government bureaucrat. Would, would it make sense though, for these smaller municipalities, it's like, if I'm looking at a list and I see Fayette County has asked for one point five and Montgomery has asked for half a million? Or I look at Montgomery half a million, Fayette County one million, and Anstead half a million. You know, I'm more likely to give, you know, divide the money out a little more generously. Should we just help the smaller municipalities apply in their own names to increase the odds of, or hopefully increase the odds of them getting funded?
One of the questions that's on the survey you have to fill out is, they want you to work, collaborate with other municipalities. So I do think that if we, I know Anthony.
Enhance our.
Our, yes, because that's the main thing.
Incorporating them in.
Yes, and Anthony's already done an agreement with Golly Bridge and Anstead that we would work with them in the scenario that we had funding available. So we do have it with Golly Bridge and Anstead, I believe, are the two that have already signed those agreements.
Well, we, we, he actually done it for all of them, didn't, didn't he originally have agreements for all municipalities?
I don't know if all the municipalities signed the agreement.
Okay, right, that, I think.
Yeah.
But it would make sense that he would offer that to everybody and see.
Yeah.
So what do you think about the amount then?
Well, in that case, if the municipalities can get dollar amounts for the tear downs, then we'll add it to an amount and, and add their names in with the people that this is going to service on the grant.
So, but do you think that, that we should ask for a million, or one point five?
Well, the more municipalities that we have, the more money we need to ask for.
Well, I mean, Steve building alone may take, you know, we may, my concern is with his is that we might not be able to fund, but it kind of like the sewer project over there. You know, we get a hundred thousand dollars in grant money toward a multimillion dollar sewer project. And then what are we going to do with it? You know, so I, I just want to, you know, I, my, my brain is leaning toward a million is where my brain is. Because that'll cover the hundred she has, maybe then some, some of those hundred fall through, we can throw some more in there. Or, you know, and then throw some toward commercial. I, I think we'd be better off with regard to these bigger projects having some estimates, you know, knowing what it's going to cost. Even though they may be a little stale by the time we apply again.
I mean, if, I, you know, if we can go ahead and get an estimate, and if you went ahead and applied for a million, I'd be happy to work with you to go ahead and apply them at, down, just for that one particular thing. I don't know if that's because you can't list it in your application, whether it works against you or not.
We can't, well, I don't think it will based on what she said.
Yeah, they, I mean, they actually encourage.
A positive incentive, a positive thing.
Yeah, they encourage, you know, to work together. And I think that way they don't have so much paperwork, they have more, so, and I'm just not sure of a figure to put in, so.
What are the, do you know what the range is that people tend to, because Bluefield's been getting a lot of money.
I mean, Bluefield got, you know, one point three, I mean, there are several places that did get a million. You know, there's not as many counties applying because not, you have to have an ordinance, so there's not as many counties applying. So there's, but there are some cities that got quite a, quite a bit of, so one million is probably not out of the realm. Like I said, a million, they could say, oh, you're only going to get five hundred thousand, so.
Well, I think if you have the houses, the issue that, that I think we talked about before is the reason the map was designed and all this information was designed is to show that there are already them hundred houses that have committed to, to letting this happen is where, where the approval of the grant will be awarded, in, in my opinion, in the way, way everything's supposed to be structured. Before, it's on a guess. If you're, if you're applying for a million dollar grant on a guess, they're going to say, well, guess right out the door. You know, you don't give them, we don't give money on a guess, we give money on what is going to be done with it. So if we have a hundred houses now, I don't think the million dollars is a question that we'll get. And I could be wrong, and everybody can give me a bunch of crap afterwards. But if you have a people committed already to do it, I don't think the million dollars is out of, out of the, out of the question.
Well, do you think we ought to request a million, or do you think we ought to request more than a million?
I think we need to leave it at a million.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of, and the only, and I kind of agree with John on that. And the only reason I do is because my, you know, I'm not going to be here, but I'm afraid if, if this thing is not continually pushed and continually worked on, that if you fall behind and you ask for a million and a half and then you don't spend the money.
Right, that's my concern.
October, like we were scrambling before for the little two hundred thousand dollars to spend it in order to get, to be able to apply for again. If we wouldn't have spent the two hundred thousand, it would have been, it would have been another year. And that funding's only going to be around so long. If you skip a couple of years, it may not be available, so.
All right, I move that we apply for a million in Reef Grant.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Okay, we're a little bit behind, Anstead property transfer. So I believe we have an updated deed. We had to do some searching and apparently it's gone back and forth between the county and the town and that sort of thing. And Anthony was able to run it to ground. So I'm going to move that we approve the deed transfer presented at the last public meeting by the Mayor of Anstead with the corrections that the prosecutor made.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, this is one that Tom is absolutely going to have to sign, but it's not time sensitive. So he's going to, let him sign that in ink, in blue ink. Okay, so next, nine fifty. Let's, let's save that. I don't want to go into executive session until we're knocking off here.
So the next thing is, Amy needs to publish an RFQ for the memorial building porch for a grant. We don't have it yet because Dan's saying the architects will write that up for her. She just needs you to make it a matter of minutes that you agree with the grant.
I move we approve publishing an RFQ to fix the memorial building porch.
Second.
All in favor? So emergency purchase of vehicle. In, most of the time, you have to compete contracts for the government to purchase things over, what was the dollar amount you?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, over the fifteen thousand spending limit. On occasion, we have emergencies that we have to purchase something more quickly when we have, like the animal control vehicle broke down and we had to replace it because there's no way to pick up the strays. Well, that's right, that's right. So one, where they both broke it, one was wrecked one or something totaled.
One was wrecked, the other one flew up.
So anyway, are we trying to prove the purchase not for a tonk, or what are, what are we?
So he was able to find one, but we need the second one, or he can't have a second officer. He was able to find one, somebody bought it with auction, so it was under the fifteen thousand. And then we need the building inspector vehicle motorized to implement too, so.
Okay, so I think we do have an emergency situation with those, because a building inspector has to go out every day. At, well, yeah, and obviously animal control of our estate. So I'm going to move that we seek the emergency purchase of those vehicles because of the critical needs for those offices to be able to travel on those vehicles to do their jobs. All in favor? Okay, and this, we're going to have to go into executive session for this. We had a request from our, one of the law firms represented us in prior matters to waive a conflict of interest so they can represent a client in the opioid settlements. And we are a plaintiff in the opioid settlements, and this is, this client is a defendant in the opioid settlements. But this firm has not represented us in the opioid settlements. It has represented us, the Bailey and Wyatt, and some other matters, usually URA and things that involve sheriff's department and stuff. So I think we need to go into executive session really quick to discuss this site. I move that we go into executive session, ten o'clock.
Second.
All right, we're back on the record from executive session at ten fifteen, and no decisions were made. We were getting legal advice on a request by Bailey and Wyatt law firm to waive a conflict of interest in their representation of express scripts in the opioid settlement litigation. And based on legal advice, I'm going to move that we go ahead and approve that conflict waiver.
Second.
All in favor? Commissioners, anything else to add? All right, motion adjourned.
Oh, yeah.